The committee of the whole meeting for December 4th, 2024 to order. Will it work? Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
President.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ortiz. Powell.
Here.
Rauschenberger.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 13th, 2024.
Move for approval, second.
Move the second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Rauschenberger.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved nine zero. The second item is the approval of the minutes for November 20th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move the second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Ortiz. Powell.
Yes.
Rauschenberger.
Yes.
Stefan.
Yes.
Thorne.
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes, motions approved eight zero with one abstention. We have a couple people that signed up for a public comment this evening. First one is Christina Agassen.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Christina Agassen, I live at 215 Wing Park Boulevard here in Elgin. I'm here today on behalf of two groups within the community. The Elgin Strongtown's Local Conversation Group is a founding leader as well as Paths of Elgin as a board member. While the details of tonight's proposal concerning the North Grove Redevelopment Project have yet to be discussed, both of the groups I am representing this evening feel it is imperative to frame these discussions with a few guiding principles as a priority. I'd like to offer two separate but similar viewpoints. First, the Elgin Strongtown's Local Conversation Group believes that truly resilient cities are built on transformative urban design principles that create neighborhoods where people can live, work, and thrive safely and sustainably. We hope to see tonight's plan a commitment to increased housing density, enhanced multimodal mobility, and intentional placemaking, all of which represent exactly the forward-thinking approach that Elgin needs. By encouraging diverse housing options from multi-unit developments to thoughtful infill housing, we can create more affordable, accessible neighborhoods. The proposed 2025 budget discussed over the last few weeks included $150,000 allocated toward an active mobility plan. Let us be clear, walkable infrastructure isn't just about sidewalks, it is about designing human-scale spaces that invite interaction, build community connection, and support local businesses. Placemaking is about creating spaces that reflect our community's unique character. This plan should do more than construct buildings and houses, it should cultivate environments where people want to gather, where generations can connect, and where Elgin's distinct identity can flourish. I am also speaking today as a board member of Paths of Elgin, an organization that witnesses the daily human cost of our housing crisis. Even tonight, as Tent City burns, we see the faces behind the statistics. Individuals whose lives have been fractured by our community's housing instability. These aren't just numbers, they're people working multiple jobs, mothers struggling to find footing, young adults cut off from opportunity, and seniors living one emergency away from displacement. This project includes details about housing, but we shouldn't consider it in terms of just housing units. It's also about human dignity. By increasing housing density wherever possible and creating truly affordable housing options, we're not just building structures but pathways out of vulnerability and creating opportunity. Each unit represents a chance for community transformation. The through lines are direct and undeniable. Before an individual is homeless, they are frequently underhoused. When people have a range of stable, diverse housing options that support them through all phases of life, we see dramatic reductions in emergency services, healthcare costs, and economic instability. We see fewer individuals cycling through shelters, fewer families torn apart by economic stress, fewer children interrupted in their education. Our current approach, treating homelessness as an emergency rather than a systemic issue, is both inhumane and fiscally irresponsible. It is the decisions that we make around development projects like this that will structure our chances for success in the future. Paths of Elgin supports a proactive upstream approach to solving root causes, not just managing symptoms, and for those reasons, we invite you to place these considerations at the top of your minds tonight as you discuss the future of our downtown development.
Thank you. Holly Marson. I'm sorry, Haley.
Good evening, you had it right the first time, Hallie, thank you so much. I'm Hallie San Clemente Morrison, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Midwest Soaring Foundation, a native-run organization in the area. It stands for Save Our Ancestors' Remains and Resources Indigenous Network Group, and it's run by White Earth Band Ojibwe Elder Joseph Standing Bear Scrans, from whom I've learnt the following land acknowledgement, and would like to read very quickly just to help us to ground our thoughts and intentions in the development that we're focused on today. So, we're on the lands of the Ho'chunk Haudenosaunee, P'walia, Kaskaskia, Kikapui, Mi'amia, Meskwaki, Takiwaki, Lakota, Dakota, Nakota, Mamachetau, Muskuten, Nishnabe, and Anishnabe Peoples. Also affiliated with The Great Listening, a grassroots program that brings opportunities for learning and listening to indigenous elders. It's focused specifically on bringing these opportunities to Elgin and is sponsored by the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission and Elevating Equity. I'm here just to comment briefly on the lot specifically north of the library. On this 13-plus acres, I'm not exactly remembering the exact amount, I wish to comment on it being one of the last natural spots of the river that stands undeveloped, it's been remediated, but is an opportunity to uphold and demonstrate our strategic plans points around environmental and sustainability, environmental stewardship, and a vibrant community. To point out some of these points very quickly, under a vibrant community, there's a point specifically aimed to increase the use of the river for recreation and entertainment, and keeping this lot as green as possible would satisfy all of the points under environmental stewardship. Under diverse housing in livable neighborhoods, not building and keeping it as green as possible, or at least building as densely as possible, would encourage the point of utilizing the existing housing stock. And under the strategic plan section of connected, engaged, and inclusive community, we have the chance to enhance the points around special events and strengthening and engaging the community's identity if we view this as a venue for culture, recreation, and nature. So, in short, it's my wish that we view this less as a building site and more as a conservation and preservation opportunity while building and maximizing the other lots closer to the Hemmonds. I think in viewing this as a cultural opportunity, we'll have the chance to celebrate the ancestries of all peoples in Elgin, which I think will enrich our understanding of how we've come to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Kelly.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the city council and the community. I'm Carrie Kelly from Riverlife Elgin, and that is an all-volunteer group of community members and stakeholders coming together to support a community-focused Elgin Riverfront. We think it's an exceptional opportunity to create a beautiful, activated, and welcoming riverfront. I also would like to acknowledge and thank Mark Malat, the Director of Community Development here in Elgin. He has been hosting very meaningful conversations with Riverlife Elgin and other stakeholders, such as the Shared Harvest Co-op, who plans to bring a grocery store to downtown Elgin. Some of the key concepts that Riverlife will be looking for in today's presentation include significant green or recreation space north of the library, which will be offset by an increase in density with fewer single-family homes but more multifamily homes. Best practices for stormwater management and net-zero building construction, mixed use in all of the parcels, mixed use is retail and commercial combined with residential. Requirements for a high-level design in materials, and I know Mr. Malat is on the same page as us with this. The Hemmonds parcel in particular, it is quite possibly the most beautiful and well-located site in all of Elgin right now, and any development on there needs to be thoughtful and reflective of the Hemmonds, which is undergoing like an approximately $13 million renovation right now. And it also will need to encourage the flow between all these parcels, and the community will need to feel welcome and have access to the river, meaningful access to the river. And one of the most consistent community requests is for a restaurant on that parcel. Parking would also be very important in all these parcels. We, having, having surface parking, it takes up way too much space, so we're encouraging underground parking where possible, we know that's expensive, but expensive, but it is done. But also maybe parking within the building, but not using the first floor, keeping the first floor retail facing outwards to the street. We would like to see quality bike and pedestrian improvements, as well as public transit opportunities, respect and integration of the land's historic uses, and many of more ideas and supporting documents are in our guidelines that we created about a year ago. We invite the community to join us, Riverlife, on December 13th at 6:00 PM at ETC Coworking at 11 Douglas, and you can email us at riverlifeelgin@gmail.com. Thanks.
Thank you. Cheryl Brumbach-Kayford.
Good evening, my name's Cheryl Brumbach-Kayford, I live at 125 Wilcox Avenue here in Elgin. I'd like to speak in support of maintaining the area north of the library in a natural state, both for the health of the river, for the health of our community, and as a way to offset our greenhouse gas emissions as a city. We know that maintaining land in a natural state, preferably returning it to something that would be environmentally appropriate for this part of Northern Illinois, such as an oak savanna or a prairie, would be the most environmentally responsible action the city council could take, and it also would be the most effective action you could take tonight to work against climate change and the progress of our, the heating of our environment, which is, as you know, is reaching critical levels. I also would speak on behalf of maintaining the area number one. I appreciate the comments made about Hemmonds putting a lot of work into its facade and its appearance from the area that we're talking about tonight. That area needs to be maintained as public space. That is a crucial public space for Elgin. You won't get it back if you build on it, it will never come back. This is the time to decide to maintain public space and also to maintain land in a natural state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. We have two presentations this evening. First up is Leslie Roth of the urban planning consulting firm Lamar Johnson Collaborative. She'll be presenting this evening on the conceptual land plan for the three sites located in the North Grove Redevelopment Area. Her presentation will be incorporating community feedback, following her initial presentation in September 2023, and her presentation will have representative images of the potential forms of development and programmatic elements within each area. To say that Ms. Roth has the wind behind her back might be an understatement. Councilmember Good reminded me that in September of 2023, we had a natural occurrence on the far west area of the city, and it's certainly windy out there this evening. So nonetheless, welcome back, Ms. Roth, looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, City Councilmembers, for the opportunity to update you on our efforts toward reconciling the diverse views about the concept plans for the three sites in the North Grove Redevelopment Area that we received during our public processes and the last presentation to City Council. Since we were last here, I've had the pleasure of sitting down and talking with several members of Riverlife and Strongtown Elgin's to get a better understanding of their perspectives, what was most important to them and their groups, and then determine to what extent those perspectives could be accommodated within the plan. And if I may, I very much appreciated the thoughtfulness that went into those multiple conversations. Our conversations were honest, very candid, and I believe have led to concept plans that represent the best of everyone's viewpoints. Recall first that the overall plan for North Grove was one that moved from the highest density and intensity on the south end, south of Kimball on Site One, which is down here in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, to a lesser intensity and density east and then north of the library, and eventually moving closer to the single-family homes that were past Seneca, towards Summit, Plum, and Jefferson, those being Sites Two, Two east of the library, and then Three north of the library. This is fundamentally not changed. That overarching concept framed the design principles that you see on your screen and that were presented at the very most earliest of our public presentations, but at the same time, after the sit-downs that we've had, the concept plans will also respond to what we affectionately referred to in those meetings as accommodating some big goals. First, on Site One north of the library, and forgive me, I'm not going to show you the images just yet because, as much as Ms. Roth was kidding me that I'm taking away a lot of her thunder, I said, "You can have the pretty pictures," then, so we'll get to that momentarily, I promise. First, on Site One, again, which was north of the library, was to move the proposed road that parallels the river even further back from that river, so there was provided even more open space. We've set aside for the time being any suggestions about how and to what extent the open space would be planned or programmed for later efforts, except that in some form or extension, it would certainly include the bike path and a path system that will split bicycle and pedestrian accommodations to maximize safety, and it's probably that those conversations are better had when it's more known about the disposition toward the Kimball Street Dam. Second, also north of the library, Ms. Roth is going to show you where we've added live-work opportunities in row houses, again, adding density north of the library. These are highly flexible mixed-use buildings that also enhance earlier advances of the plan that address a planning term that you may have heard called the missing middle, where not all housing choices need to be provided in single-family or townhouses or apartments, but there's building typology that fits in between there, such as duplexes and quads, and accessory dwelling units when those are located above garages. And finally, we wanted to consider the potential benefits of emphasizing green infrastructure, such as pocket parks and boulevards, that would provide opportunities for water infiltration. And Ms. Roth will, Ms. Roth will show you an option where if, that we may be looking at an opportunity to reclaim land immediately north of the library for development if it otherwise proved that these efforts did not necessitate additional land set aside for stormwater. As it related to Site Three south of the library, the main point on which everyone seemed to agree last time was that any building needed to be pulled back from the river, especially to avoid that pinch point on the south side just north of the Hemmonds. So Ms. Roth will show you two concepts for that property, one that includes a little bit of private development and more opportunity for public-private amenities, and a second option that includes a little more private development with a little less public-private amenity, but both avoid that pinch point. There was general agreement on the concept plan for the property just east of the library, Site Two, that showed mixed-use development on the south with three-story townhouses on the north. The most slightest of differences between those concepts that we showed you last time depended upon the structural viability and the safety of the, of building around the silo. And finally, before I turn it over to Ms. Roth, I want to remind everyone that these are very much concept plans. These are not commitments etched in stone, that these are the only ways that these properties can develop or ever should develop. Rather, they're intended to provide a framework that allows us to help attract developers, spark interest in this property, and then have additional conversations. And then with that, let me introduce Leslie Roth of the Lamar Johnson Collaborative to show you the latest concept plans for Sites One, Two, and Three.
Thank you, Mark. So, as mentioned, I have the distinct pleasure of sharing with you a couple different options for each one of the sites. As Mark mentioned, Site Two has remained relatively unchanged, but we've included it in this deck just for your reference. When we began to incorporate the public engagement conversations and the modifications to these sites, things that really bubbled to the top that we wanted to focus on, particularly for Site One and Site Three, were creating a diversity of housing options, including infill, and looking at a perspective of density that was different than what we see throughout Elgin, and provided unique opportunities to include a variety of placemaking elements. We also wanted this to be very human-scale, and we wanted to make sure that the river's edge remained public, broad, preserved, and conserved, and that there was an opportunity for environmental stewardship along the river's edge because of the, of its unparalleled beauty and importance to the community. And lastly, we emphasized mixed-use development, which you can see in the scheme here, as well as in the scheme to the north of the library. By creating mixed-use development, we wanted to attract and retain small business, cultivate entrepreneurship, and ultimately host a variety of commercial options that were complimentary to those already found in downtown, but could also be a new experience, a new destination for residents of Elgin today and in the future. What you're seeing here on Site One, Option One, is a mid-rise mixed-use development. The, if you can see the small blue circles, I'll just walk you through those. The L-shaped building that you see aligns itself with Kimball Street and has, is proposed to have retail and commercial on the ground floor. There's potential for an outbuilding, we called it a brewery in previous schemes, but if you've seen the economic development pro forma for breweries, you may want to be rethinking that today, unfortunately. I still like beer, but you know how it goes. So, restaurant, and that was mentioned as a number-one choice of residence and what this outbuilding could potentially be. Number three is a connection to the river, we know that this is very important. As Mark mentioned previously, there was a little bit of a pinch point here, so we wanted to make sure that this unique amenity was accessible, a destination, had beautiful view corridors, and was not impinged on by a building. So, we emphasize public access here. There also is an opportunity for private rooftop amenities for residents of this building that is TBD. Parking is within the building, it is on a podium, but it does not impinge on the first floor retail, commercial spaces, as well as resident amenity spaces on the first floor, but will be a podium building, or is proposed to be a podium building. And lastly, number six is a bike path connection that goes from the regional trail system to the north all the way through this site. Option Two is similar, and this, in this design, we took a different approach to the massing of the building. It is all, still around four floors, this is about 50 dwelling units per floor, for a total of 150 to 160 units. It's similar to this one, this one has about 15 fewer units. In this scheme, we wanted to look at open space along the river to, that was not only open to the public, but also had view corridors on three sides of the interior of the building. The outbuilding is now incorporated into the primary mixed-use residential building. The connection to the river remains the same, this you'll see is consistent throughout all of the options that we've proposed, and this is also quite a bit more space than we showed you previously in September. This scheme also has a bike path connection. To give you some idea of some illustrative images of what kind of programming could take place in the open spaces, we've showed you those on the left-hand side of the slide, everything from food trucks, games, family-focused events, art, art opportunities, et cetera. There is, because in the rendering that we're showing you here today, we did not decide specifically on programming, this is something that, you know, does have an opportunity to be crowdsourced or opportunistic about what is, what we want to show as the best of Elgin at any time of year. Again, looking at the L-shaped building and what that river's edge treatment can be like, we've given you three ideas of opportunities for the river's edge. The images on the left sort of illustrate what some of those can be. There was some interest in being able to have a closer experience to the river's edge, this may be done by stairs or a way of providing access actually to the river. This could also remain a naturalized edge, as Mark mentioned, with, as we know more about dam removal, this is going to have an impact on the shape of that river's edge, and we wanted to remain flexible in the programming here in the event that there's an opportunity after the dam is removed. This is an example of a building typology that could potentially fit on site, on the site. So, this is an example of a building that has, you know, approximately four or five stories of residential above a podium. Again, we really believe that the first floor of this building should remain for resident amenities, lobby space, retail, and commercial uses, and so parking will be behind that facade. We wanted to make sure that any, that the pedestrian environment around this building remain accessible and activated. At Site Two, as we mentioned, this area remains relatively unchanged. In the scheme that we're showing you here, the silo remains, this is a mix of mid-rise wrap building as well as townhomes. The mid-rise wrap building has an opportunity for commercial and retail on the ground floor. There is, the center street is maintained, so that is the dividing line between the higher-density townhomes and the mid-rise building. The silo can be used as public art, and making sure that, of course, there'll be, need to be additional assessment and studies to make sure that it is safe in this location. And there's also private rooftop amenities for residents of the building, as well as improving the intersection at Grove and Kimball for safety purposes. This is an example of a rear-loaded row home, this is proposed for Site Two. We wanted to propose the rear-loaded row home to preserve the street edge and to make sure that we limited the amount of potential conflicts between pedestrians and cars. This whole development between the three, all, all three sites, really, there's pedestrian prioritization, and so all of the car use, vehicular uses are generally separated from where pedestrians will be. This is another example of a rear-loaded townhome, it may look familiar to you. And lastly, we'll get to Site Three. There's two options for Site Three, and I'll walk through the differences with you. In this scheme, there is, the river's edge has been maintained, there is also a potential for retention-detention on the south side of the site, just north of the library parking lot. The riverfront park in this scheme is approximately 13 acres, including that, the detention. This is an increase from 9.5 in the scheme that we showed you on September, increase from 9.5 acres. The river's edge varies from 195 feet to 340 feet wide, this is also, varies between almost 50 to 125 feet wider than what we showed you in September. There is a system here of private alleys and rear-loaded garages, as I mentioned, pedestrian prioritization is important to all of these schemes, and there is a variety of housing typologies. You'll notice that the blue and purple areas identify different types of housing, duplex, quads. We understand that housing diversity and density is extremely important to the community, and we wanted to make sure that we built into the framework enough flexibility that that could, that would actually work. The neighborhood ties into the adjacent, existing neighborhood by its street network, so the street framework, as you can see, continues. And Summit Street actually has, you know, an opportunity for a terminal access at the river, which is something that should be highlighted in future designs. There is a little bit of public visitor parking near the detention, this is a really beautiful area, and particularly with continuity of the bike trails and walking paths, we wanted to make sure that it was not going, anybody coming to this area would not burden the existing neighborhoods. And finally, you'll notice at number seven, within the block furthest to the north, there is a small pocket park. We wanted to emphasize green infrastructure and stormwater management best practices, adding green space and boulevards where appropriate. In Option Two, this entertains the option that if detention is ultimately not needed, this would be determined by a civil engineer, but if it is ultimately not needed, there's an opportunity to introduce another type of housing. This type of housing would be townhomes similar to what you're seeing on Site Two. The riverfront park in this scheme is 9.5 acres, and the width of the river's edge varies similarly to the previous scheme, 195 feet to 340 feet. In this scheme, there are 34 single-family lots, three duplex lots of six units, and three quad lots of 12 units. So, you can see that there is a variety of housing typologies that is new to the city of Elgin and could be a benefit in this area, particularly along the river's edge. The pocket park is maintained, that's number five, and then number six introduces a boulevard, which is the terminal access to the river. The river's edge- The river's edge is preserved. As you can see, we wanted to maintain flexible programming. There was an emphasis on passive programming in our previous scheme from September. There were a number of programmatic uses that were identified in this area. We understand from the conversations between September and today that maintaining passive use and natural beauty was important to residents, and so that has been preserved in this scheme. To give you an idea of what some of these residential typologies may look like, here we're showing you a few different types of single-family homes as well as accessory dwelling units. We know that having accessory dwelling units provides ample opportunity for a variety of demographics, particularly multi-general households, live-work, et cetera. And lastly, this is the summary of the three sites. Site One, again, is south of the library. Site Two is east of the library, and Site Three is north of the library. Thanks so much.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Ms. Roth at this time? Mr. Ortiz.
Appreciate both of you working on this, coming back with a bunch of different revisions. For Site One, I'm gonna double down on myself last time, so you might be annoyed with me.
Ice skating rink?
There we go. Yeah. So, I like how for Option One, I think it is, we have the L-shaped building, how you opened up more green space. Can we put a ribbon in there like Maggie Daley Park, where you have like the sidewalk curves around and loops around and make that the ice skating rink?
So, we looked at the physical space that something like that would require, and based upon a configuration like that, you could probably get a ribbon that was roughly a third of the size of the Maggie Daley ribbons.
I know theirs is huge, so we're not going to be able to fit that here.
No, 100%, but, you know, and so then you get into working with a particular developer and the provision of the private amenities versus the public amenities, but this option was put forth with the intention of having more opportunity to consider those types of programmatic elements.
So, you'd plug that in somewhere in the fine print, that that would be a thing that the, at least me, I don't know what the rest of the council, what I would like to see in there. And then for Site Two, the courtyard inside the building, would that be private, just the residents, or would that be like a public, where people would walk through to get to the northern lot?
Those are typically reserved for the, as an amenity for the residents of those buildings.
Okay.
They're typically also built up, and what Ms. Roth showed you here as well as on Site One, where you have that podium type of configuration, they can be anywhere from one to two stories of parking with the retail in front of it. That gets you, that gets you the ability to do that because the, especially here on Site One, where we're that close to the river, the ability to go down is very, very, very expensive. You might have a better opportunity to do that on Site Two, but you would still more than likely build that up and provide parking underneath there. There's a very rigid formula that maximizes the efficiency of podium parking garages in very rigid increments, so that you maximize that going up and with your ramps and stuff like that.
Okay. Yeah, I understand going down, because I think it was Geneva Batavia they were trying to dig, and then the river caved in on them or almost caved in on them.
On Site One, the interior of the building is fairly close to the floodplain where the open spaces, and so we were concerned about parking being below grade because of that as well.
Okay. And then on Site, is it Three? I'm scrolling down. Of Site Three, between Summit and Seneca, there's a bunch of buildings still there, like Casitas or like a store, the mechanic shop, and you have the lots going opposite the way the current lots are going. So, are you planning on like, I mean, domaining or taking over those?
Absolutely not, no. In the 14 years that I've been here, there has never been provisions where I've even heard stories told of the city approaching proprietors and saying, "Hey, it's time for you to go." Absolutely not. The approach that the city has taken historically towards riverfront property acquisition has been, if you're interested in selling, please let us know. We would be interested in buying. And in all likelihood, unless directed otherwise by city council, that would be the approach that we would have here. So, we would have to determine what would be the best way to phase in the infrastructure and the lot configuration, respecting that there are some existing land uses there.
Okay. I seen the way you had the lots laid out, and I was worried that that was something or a possibility, because I don't want to see them go. Hopefully, they don't want to go. That's it for now. Thanks.
Okay. Any further questions? Anybody down this way? Ms. Rothenberger.
Thank you both so much. I think you worked hard as well as the community in thinking about how we can use this land. One of my questions is about parking, and I think you've maximized the idea that we don't want to just put more asphalt down, right? That we're going to try to put the parking within the building. So, for the site south of the library, is that, with that, with the L-building, is that perhaps one, so you build the parking and then the building on top, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Would it be one floor or two floors?
It's two floors of podium parking.
And it's called podium parking?
Yes.
That's a new one for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that site will require, certainly require additional study, because as everyone knows, there's 150 parking spaces that are there now for the public. And inasmuch as staff, and I believe city supports the, you know, density, in so long as we have high-quality design and great places, we also have to make sure that that density doesn't create any negative secondary impact. So, to the extent that this development can park itself, then we also have to contemplate to what extent do we want to provide additional public parking?
Public parking, yeah.
And so, this very well could become, you know, I think we have on here, one of his, like, it was four plus as what that, what that building might be, depending on how many floors of parking you have, as well as that, the expansion of that podium creates additional opportunities for rooftop spaces. So, there's a variety of different configurations that could ultimately result, depending upon additional studies that would happen.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I just like the idea that the parking is inside and, you know. So, then if we go to Site Two, so that's the same thing. We've got podium parking in the square building.
Yep.
Okay. And that's more like the inside, that wouldn't be public parking, probably, not necessary.
No, more than likely, I mean, there is a potential for some commercial uses on the ground floor, so similar to Site One, there is an opportunity for.
Right. If you have, if you have some, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that conversation should certainly be had with the developer.
They would need some parking there. Okay.
Yep. And this would be, this is similar, about two levels of podium parking for, to park the building itself.
Okay. And then the other side, the north side of that.
Those townhomes park themselves, so they either have garages, or there's a little bit of surface parking within that.
Oh, I see. The garages are underneath or something?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, but we didn't need a big giant parking lot, because they can park underneath?
That's right. Each unit has space.
That's great. Okay, that's great.
And then those would be, those townhouses there, as well as the townhouses that transitioned to the north side, would be opportunities for persons, if they wanted a pure residential experience, to live in that townhouse and work somewhere else, or if they wanted to have a ground-floor law office or accounting, or they would then have that flexibility to do live-work in these types of configurations.
Right. So, those are three stories?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Like our place on Summit in 25, the old coat factory.
Shoe factory. Oh, Shoe Factory.
Shoe Factory, yeah. Shoe Factory, which is, that has an office downstairs.
It would look, these are, these are great, I mean, we have great examples here in Elgin already. And so, the only difference being is that if someone wanted to have a, an accounting office, or some, something where they were, did the live-work opportunity, they could do that, but the building typology, we're hoping would be as high-quality as what city council got in these two developments we used as examples.
Okay. Then can you go back to the one picture of the possible typology of the building for Square One? Right, this. Okay. So, I see that this is kind of a typology or a style that's kind of more popular today. I was just looking up some, something about it, saying it's, they're calling it sort of fast casual architecture or SpongeBob SquarePants.
Oh, my. All right.
I'm not that fond of it personally, so that's all I want to say about it. And I think, you know, it's mentioning here that there's, sort of, it's flat, it's kind of not very decorative, it's trying to give you some whatever, but understanding it's probably a more inexpensive way to build, correct?
Well, I would, I would offer that that's probably not a very cheap building to build, considering, you know, it is bringing forward many of the principles of quality architecture that you look for, the solid base, the masonry in the middle, a well-articulated top, in movement along the facades, but, you know, taste is certainly in the eye of the beholder. And what we're, what the next steps will be is if we have general consensus to go forward with these as the concept plans, would be to continue to refine the design guidelines that Ms. Roth has provided, which will outline those broad parameters and give then developers flexibility to respond to general guidelines of how architecture should be.
But it is similar to the, to the building on the west side of the library across the river.
Fox River Crossing?
Yeah. Similar to that, similar to what we put up on the hill for our lower-cost housing when we redid those buildings up there. It's not very similar to that. It's that kind of.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, yeah, it just seems.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
That's all my, that's my comment. And, but, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction. I understand it's just conceptual, lots of things.
Just want to make sure we're headed in the right direction and that we haven't fundamentally missed something as we.
Right. And I think the 13 acres, is that the amount of riverfront we have? Okay. And I think we sort of agreed on that with Riverlife. It's a nice enough space to have river access and make it a natural space.
Lot of flexibility for passive and active recreation, however that may be desired to be planned out.
Yes, decided to do. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody down this way? Mr. Stephan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark and Leslie, thank you. This is great update. I appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. I'm perusing through the slides, the deck that we've gotten, and on Site One, a little bit, but more on Site Three, there's notation that there's going to be a bike path, but I don't really see it in the drawings. Is that just because they're conceptual?
Again, very conceptual, right.
All right. Just wanted to make sure that's why.
If there was one commonality, Councilman, that we heard, it was you got to have the bike path. And so, there's a faint dashed line there on Site Three that shows that.
Okay. That was another question I had. Is that a proposed walking path, or maybe that is the way?
One of the, one of the items that we worked with the folks from Riverlife was making sure that when that is designed, that it's safe, making sure that there's opportunity to split modes for bicyclists and pedestrians. And I believe I mentioned that in one of my earlier comments, but that was something that was very, that was very important to the folks from Riverlife.
We also wanted to make sure that there was universal design access to the riverfront, so those with mobility issues and thinking about Americans with Disabilities Act, that we wanted to make sure that everyone in the city was able to take advantage of the riverfront.
100%. And, and it's not just in a north-south way. One of the items that Ms. Roth described is extending Summit Street through as a boulevard, opening that up to ensure that persons who are living to the east of there have ample access to get to there and don't feel like necessarily they're intruding on someone's, on someone's neighborhood. So, we wanted to make sure that was expanded, helps with green infrastructure, potential stormwater issues, but at the same time enhances access to the river.
And one more question I see on some of the slides, there's a faint blue line that runs through some of the river's edge mostly. I assume that's like a floodplain? I'm looking at Site Three particularly.
Yeah, that's Site Three.
And you can see it on the.
There, we did draw in, there was a faint line that did note where the floodplain was, because it dips, especially on Site One, it dips quite far into the site, the way that it curves in. And we wanted to make sure that any building footprint or program that was planned was not in, the built area was not inside of the floodplain. On Site Two, it wouldn't necessarily be affected, but on Site Three, it also, you know, we wanted to make sure that, one, the floodplain wasn't incorporated into any design ideas or elements, and, two, that in thinking about what the river's edge could be with, if the dam is removed, we didn't want to include any programming that would then, you know, need to be removed or that, yeah, exactly. That would, you know, impinge on what that was. So, we were relatively conservative in how we planned the buildings and how we planned the riverfront.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to have that clear. Lots to look at. Thank you very much. And Douglas is not Doleus.
Oops. Do we have a typo in there? Sorry.
Nope, just caught it.
We know where we are. We'll fix it.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Thank you to the residents that came out this evening too as well to speak your piece and continue to make our wants, our needs for this development known. It sounds like a lot of what they've been saying for a while now, the residents, that you've already incorporated inside of this. So, thank you, Mr. Milat. Thank you, Leslie. This thing is moving right along, and so I'm really pleased with the communication that has taken, taken place thus far. I do want to mention a couple of things that was brought up by the residents, and you already talked about this a little bit, but when it comes to the parking, was there or is there any potential for underground parking?
Again, that's going to depend, depends on which site you're at, depends on whether it's public, whether it's private, the cost of that. There's a lot of different variables that go into it. We're hearing estimates right now that a structured parking without having to resolve any sort of floodplain, floodway issues is running anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000 a space. So, when you build structured parking, it's not cheap. So, those conversations, those decisions have to be very intentional.
Okay. And the land itself, is it, could it even, could we even use it for those purposes? I guess we should start there, because all land, you can't do underground parking on, and so is it even possible with this?
Well, as Councilman Ortiz suggested, there are, there have been, there have been very recent examples where folks close to bodies of water have found problems when they tried, when they tried to dig down. The first thing that anybody would do when they're really serious about developing on one of these pieces of property would do soil borings, determine where the water level was, how far down do you have to get to bedrock, before they got too far down the road.
Yeah. And I think probably like one of the most recent conversations that we had around underground parking was the PNC Bank, right? And they have flood issues, and that's right there off of the river. But of course, that was built like, you know, 50 years ago, 75 years ago, whatever the case may be. So, the technology is different, so we would expect the result to be different too as well. So, just to be like really clear about my thoughts, and we're just in the conceptual phase, off that, I don't like the single-home concept, just because in the downtown area, I think density is more where we're trying to go. And when it comes to the row homes, which are great, phenomenal, I actually used to live in one, really loved it and just outgrew it, and moved over, you know, moved over to the west side. But I think just overall, when designing this entire property, is that, in my idea, we want to provide an option that's not currently available to our residents. So, the row homes are available, you know, if you can get yourself into one. You have two options, right? The one right around the corner, and then the one right across the street from Festival Park. Park. So providing, uh, some more density, uh, options, um, some more dense options, you know, sounds like a better idea to me. Um, but that's not to say that I dislike the design, that's just my idea behind, you know, what direction we should go.
Sure, and, and this is something that we struggled with in trying to, to communicate the overall concept of, for North Grove, right? When you're looking at anywhere from three hundred to four hundred units potentially being just on site one and the south part of site two, transitioning to row houses, and, and the, and the minimal amount of land that those building typologies consume, right? But then you see site three, and you're like, whoa, it's so much bigger. But when you actually then count the number of units, it's, I want to say, Councilman, we're probably maybe five to ten percent of the total number of units are shown in single-family homes across the entire spectrum of the, of the, of the buildings that we have. So the intent would be, is that if you really loved this area, we provided so many different choices for housing that you would never have to leave.
I love it. Um, and lastly, well, not lastly, one more thing before I get to the last question, um, the site options, between site options one and option two of site one, um, I like the idea of having the standalone restaurant, um-
You like the L?
In the L shape.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and, let me see, you know, the mid-rise wrap, we, we kind of already have that concept too, and so again, it's like, you know, providing a different option. Um, and you want something that's aesthetically pleasing, that blends into the downtown, of course, um, something that we know works, like there's a certain comfort in that. I would just, um, when it comes to the design elements, I would ask that we just, you know, push the envelope and just continue to think outside of the box. Um, and so that's what I would say about the, the mid-rise, uh, wrap. Um, option, you know, for the rest of the options, I, you know, I think there's a lot to flesh out, but another point I want to make, um, on the behalf of a resident, uh, that was speaking here tonight about the natural lands and preserving those as much as possible, can you, uh, maybe go into a little bit of detail about how that, so no matter what option that we choose, that we are preserving, you know, public lands, uh, for the, for the use of the community and things of that nature?
Sure, first and foremost, uh, you know, fundamental big goal, number one, from last time we were here, to sitting down with the folks from Riverlife and, and Strong Towns was, to provide additional open space, uh, along, alongside site three especially, maximize that opportunity for, for natural ecosystems. You know, you look at a space like Festival Park, completely different, completely different environment, right, completely different landscape, um, and you need an amount of critical mass if you want to have those natural ecosystems actually function. So, by going from, I think, nine and a quarter in September, up to thirteen, up to thirteen acres, you know, that, that's a big jump, and, um, you know, comparing that size, just in, in, by, by perspective, if you went from the, the Festival Park at the southern end where the, the new concrete pad is, for, for, all the way up to the end of the, of the, the green space there, that's about seven hundred feet long, in terms of the, the length. This is, this space from, uh, from Ann Street all the way north is sixteen hundred feet long. So it's, it's a, it's almost two plus times the amount of, of land that we're talking about. Again, so many different opportunities there, but, you know, wanted to have those at a different time, didn't want to get the, the conversations about getting the building typologies and the site plans caught up between, well, is a soccer field going there? Or is a marina going there? What happens with the dam? What if you build that marina and the water? So, we, we, we took those off the table for now, and we'll have those conversations hopefully in the future.
Okay, great, great. And, uh, yeah, of course, we want high quality.
Absolutely.
We have one quite, high quality in everything that we're doing, um, but I also don't want to get, to get lost, that we also want environmentally friendly materials in doing these buildings. Um, and to that point, uh, priority hous, prioritize housing diversity by type and price point is really super important, so I'm glad that that's a pillar, um, of the design work that, that's going forward. So, with that, I'll pass on to my colleagues, thank you, Mark, for your help with Riverlife, um, with the coming grocery store, uh, the work if you've done with DNA, uh, so you're turning into like a little rock star here, you know, so I just want to let you know. So keep up the great work, and thank you again, Leslie.
Of course.
Okay. Ms. Powell, you're trained up.
Thank you, thank you, Leslie and Mark, for, um, the presentation, and thanks to the residents who spoke today. Um, I know all of you have been very diligent and, um, very consistent around, um, providing feedback and looking at what is being proposed, and being very thoughtful, um, along with several other residents, obviously, in the community that have provided input, um, had the opportunity to, to attend, uh, some of those sessions, and, um, just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that, that people have, um, expressed. And I also appreciate too, Leslie, you coming back and incorporating a lot of, I think, what we've heard from, from residents, including, uh, some of the ones who spoke today. Uh, a couple of clarifications I'm looking for on site two. The town, uh, looks like three and two, um, the buildings, I'm trying to understand, I know they, I think you said that they, uh, have garages that load from the back, so is the back considered Brook Street? I'm assuming that the front faces Brook Street, and then the back faces-
It's the interior of the lot.
The interior of the lot, okay.
So, Ann and Center would both be accessible to the residents that live within that town home development.
Okay.
So they would turn down like a, an alley, essentially, to get into their garage, from either Center or Ann.
Got it.
And the fronts would be on North Grove and Brook.
Okay, got it. And then, the mid-rise wrap podium mixed-use development building, um, shown under item one, um, and I think Councilman Dixon kind of referred to this in his, his, um, statement, where do we currently have this, and I'm trying to think-
To a lesser extent-
Is it Larkin?
Fox River Crossing is built on, built up on, on parking, but it's tucked into the hill, so the way in which that one looks, you don't get the full effect. Um, I, I think Leslie would concur, the ground floor treatments of these types of buildings are, are very critical, uh, to make sure that you don't lose that human scale, that you maintain interest as you're walking along those streets. You know, we, it would absolutely be, uh, a travesty if we went through all this great effort, got these land plans, great design, and people didn't want to walk south along Grove and, and into our downtown, because we, it was a terrible experience. So those types of things are, are, are very important, um, so treatments of, of how you make that street, uh, are, are critical. Um, but in terms of a, of a true podium building, um, none are, none are, it's Fox River Crossing would probably be the, the most-
Okay. Now I'm trying to remember where Fox River Crossing is.
Oh, right across the street at, at, at Kimball and State.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Um, and when I think about some of these, the, the midwi, the, not necessarily the midrise, rise wrap, but the podium mixed-use development, I've seen some of those, um, like in Elmhurst downtown, I think, and I want to say, uh, Mount Prospect as well. And they seem to be pretty popular, um, and, and work well. Um, so I've been excited to-
They're very efficient.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited to see that, uh, because I think, um, especially, um, incorporating the, the residential portion, you know, in the upper floors, uh, incorporating the, the parking, but then having, you know, the commercial use, um, on the main floors as well, it, it's, it's a much better use of the space. What I was a little concerned about, um, well, actually, let me go back to site one, and something, uh, that Councilman Ortiz said-
You want the L-shaped building?
Um, I think it was the L-shaped. Yeah, I think it was the L-shaped for the, um, ice rink. Because I'm, even though I don't ice skate, for some reason, I'm like really fascinated by bringing the ice rink back downtown, um, but I, I do like that idea of, of kind of using that space for that, um, or, um, having the opportunity potentially to use that space. I love the, um, the plans for, uh, private rooftop, rooftop amenities. Um, I think that that's something that we've kind of missed out on, uh, compared, in comparison to some of our neighbors, our neighboring communities, rooftop, you know, dining and entertainment, um, I think that's something that would be great to bring to our downtown. Um, I love the, uh, bike path connections, you know, that's something that we've continued to focus on in our community as well. Um, one of the, the questions I had was on site three, excuse me, and I think someone else had mentioned this as well. If the goal is to really promote density, I'm struggling with the number of single-family homes, or even the need to incorporate single-family homes. Just because of the, the neighborhood that's adjacent to this development is primarily single-family homes. I know that there are some multifamily homes there, but I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little torn about-
Yeah, those were, those were Councilman Dixon's comments about the extent to which, and so what we tried to do was say, was to recognize that overarching the entirety of the North Grove redevelopment plan was most dense, most intense on the south, transition to lesser density, lesser intensity, as you are, as this land does integrate into and adjacent to single-family homes. And, and so we were of the opinion that, that if you were living in those single-family homes right there, the last thing that you would necessarily want would be something monumental from a building perspective, that might restrict your access to the river visibly. And so, mirroring that land use, at least on the, the northern two lots, and, and I will admit, we added those row houses, those live-work units, uh, right there. That was originally, uh, if you remember back into September, that would, the, the entirety of site three was a mix of single-family homes with a smattering of duplexes and quads, so that's a change there, uh, bringing more density further north. But again, from the entirety of the perspective of the number of units, the amount of single-family homes that you see there, while they do graphically absorb a lot of land, from a numbers perspective, they're a very, very small amount of the total number of units that would, that could ultimately be at North Grove.
I, I get that, um, but as-
And they have ADUs, accessory dwelling units, so, with the rear-loaded garages, opportunities for additional density in that manner, um, you know, for, for in-laws, or, or even an opportunity to rent out a small apartment over a garage. So, uh, recognizing, yes, that traditional cookie cutter, single-family homes, uh, is probably the lowest density you could have, these are very narrow lots, rear-loaded, and then have an opportunity for a second dwelling unit on that same property.
And I do appreciate the incorporation of the accessory dwelling unit, I think that's a very creative and, um, uh, creative, uh, creative and effectual, a way to affect, um, the density of, of the, the properties that we're looking at. I, I do like that option, because it, it gives your, whether it's in-laws or children that come home from college, it don't have anywhere else to live.
Or even as an opportunity to help affordability.
Yes, definitely, and, um, perfect segue, uh, talking about affordability, um, I, I think that's why I'm really interested in the whole duplex and the quad, I mean, because we don't have, I don't think we have a whole lot of quads, and, and that's, that's a whole different and new type of, um, unit that we don't really see a lot of in Elgin, but especially in our downtown, um, and the duplex units, I know we do have, you know, areas that have duplexes, but-
And we, we stole those from working with, uh, with the Larkin Center. If you remember, the land that we developed to the north of there, having those resemble larger, single-family homes, but on the inside, so that you still have that front porch, that great streetscape experience, but then you have smaller units inside, and so that was the, the desirable typology here of that mix of duplexes and quads that look, that, that feel like just larger, single-family homes.
Yes, I, I do like that. Um, I guess I'm curious with the remaining, um, and this would be for site three, the, uh, number one, the riverfront park, um, with it kind of being long and narrow shaped, what does it really lend itself for? I mean, is, is there the opportunity for boat, you know, docks for people to canoe? Um, what are some of the options, you know, based on the topography and the shape? Um, you know, because it's one thing to say, hey, we want open space, we, we want access to the river, which I do think is very important, it's been, I think, a, an amenity in our community that we haven't, um, taken full advantage of, and I want to make sure that through this process, we recognize that and, and make, um, options for that.
I think the size of this land gives you essentially a, a blank canvas to, to do, to do whatever you want to do from a recreation perspective. If there was a commonality of feedback that we received, it was natural river's edge, uh, bike and pedestrian paths, and then an opportunity for, um, for, for more active recreation, be it, uh, like a place to get an ice cream cone, restroom stop, uh, rent bikes, uh, rent, uh, rent a canoe or a kayak, closer down towards where Ann comes in on the north side of, on the north side of the library down there. Uh, but, uh, you know, with, with not knowing exactly what we're going to do with the dam and, and where that river's edge will be, uh, it didn't make a lot of sense for us to say, yeah, we're going to put a, a marina here, only then to say, oh, now we've got to scoot it further out. So, the, uh, so, so answer your question, yes, 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 and yes, whatever, you know, whatever it is you, uh, you guys want to do on that from a recreation perspective.
Okay. Um, yeah, still, you know, a lot to absorb, uh, appreciate it, I guess probably my, my bigger takeaways are, I'm, I'm still interested in an ice rink downtown, um, I would still like to see probably more duplexes and quads in site three versus the single-family homes, but I, but I do like the accessory use options, that does appeal to me as well. Um, and definitely roof, probably several rooftop opportunities, I think, are going to be really important, um, for our downtown as well. So I think, um, yeah, this is exciting. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, way down here, Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, Leslie, thank you so much. Uh, my colleagues have expressed many of my compliments, um, with one exception, I actually am a fan of including a few single-family opportunities, because it very well could attract a little more high-end clientele that's going to spend a little more money downtown, um, which is something that maybe wasn't, uh, that is certainly a possibility. Uh, a little fancier, a little unique, uh, here's a couple, you know, it's not going to be very many of them, but it could very well, uh, be, uh, just right for the right people. Um, so I compliment you on including everything, that, that's one of the takes that I have out of it. Uh, as far as, number one, um, I like the uniqueness of that building, because it's not too modern. And as things are going forward, it, it still looks, it looks adequate, it looks proper, uh, and it's update, it's updated, of course, progress and preservation, I guess. Uh, so, I, I compliment you on that, and I really like the utilization of the- I, I compliment you on that. And I really like the utilization of the underground parking. So, uh, just want to compliment you both and, and everything I'm seeing here looks great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, really quick now, you all had a chance. Ms. Rocheburger.
Yes, this is quick and it's a little off-topic, but now, knowing about this podium parking, um, or podium parking in buildings, I think, um-
That's good.
We can look at this Civic Center parking lot as a podium parking building with parking below, more, um, uh, housing and retail for all of us, right in the middle of town.
Did you just expand, Ms. Ross' scope of services?
Right. It's a strong towns concept, I know, that parking lots don't generate money, don't generate, you know, people, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ortiz.
With, uh, Mr. Poovens's bridge replacement coming up in the near future, are we, uh, option one, are we going to have enough right-of-way to like move the street in case he needs to move it to align, hit the street with his bridge?
So paying very close attention to Mr. Poovens's past presentations and where that bridge would go, uh, let's see, more than likely that bridge is coming to, out into the north. So there shouldn't be necessarily any issues with the, with Site One, however, since we control it, if we need more right-of-way, we have the ability to give ourselves whatever we need.
We also looked at a bike path under-
Mm-hmm, hundred percent.
-the bridge, to coordinate with the new design.
All right, thank you, Leslie.
Mr. Dixon, really quick.
Thank you. Uh, just one thing I, I thought about. Um, I can't tell from these drawings, but I just want to put it out there. Um, you know, I, I would like to see more things face the river versus the opposite, um, you know, and not treat the river like a blight, but as a, you know, a great natural resource to be cherished and to be seen and to be experienced. And so I, I just want to put that out there while we're designing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Powell.
Just a clarification. Um, did we look at, are we considering like LEED certification, um, requirements or encouraging LEED certification on, um, any of the buildings?
Yeah.
So in as much as we control the property, you know, if, if there is the desire of council to put that on as a condition of the sale to a potential developer, that's certainly something that can be considered.
The design guidelines also have a whole chapter on sustainable elements. So just as a starting point, I would also recommend that in addition to LEED, you look at LEED-ND, which is Neighborhood Development, and there's a whole variety of other sustainable system sites is another one that you may want to look at. So just depending on which direction you want to go in, there's a whole variety of sustainable elements that could be incorporated into this. Um, if commissioning is the important part to you, then LEED would be your system. But if you're looking for overall, an overall level of very high performance and very high sustainability, there's a variety of other systems we can look at as well.
Great, and if you can share those, that would be great. I think that would be something I would be interested in incorporating into this, um, you know, going along with, you know, what the city has tried to move forward with, um, part of our strategic plan. Um, and the other last question I had was the, the, um, residential properties, do we have like a breakdown of how, like, is, would half of them be like owner-occupied, half would be rental, or have we gotten that far into the-
Haven't gotten that far into it.
Okay.
Same, same type of question could be asked about the mid-rises or, or the buildings on Site One. Would those be apartments? Would those be condos? More than likely, we would respond to what a developer was proposing, so, but to be determined. And again, at the end of the day, we control the property. So if it's something that we don't like, we're, we're never obligated to, to let our property go.
Right. I, I, I think it's important that we have a, a good mix of owner-occupied versus rental. Everyone's not in a position to, to buy a home. Um, and I think making sure that we have, um, rental properties and especially, uh, maybe more affordable price rental properties, because that continues to be a challenge in our community. Um, I think as someone stated earlier, um-
And the variety of housing types really help that.
Will help with that, will help with that a lot. Okay, thank you.
Uh, wrap up, we got something, John, do you have-
Yeah, just, I just, just quickly, Mayor, if I could, just a second. I, I've been toggling through these and, um, Site One, I just wanted to throw out option three, just like you need that. Um, I, I look at the two options you provided, and I'd, I'd suggest maybe making the arm along Kimball Street longer in Site, in the option one, to absorb the standalone restaurant, which is what you show in option two. And by doing that, maybe shortening the arm along Grove Avenue in option one. And then you could shorten the turnaround, like you show in option two, and you end up with more green space down at that south end of that parcel, which then faces the Hemmans and its new addition. So kind of readjusting the building and having more of it along Kimball, less of it along Grove, and more open space. So I'm just throwing that out there. Thanks.
Uh, we got to move along a little bit, but a couple of quick things. Um, I, I think you need to spend more time on stormwater detention. You just give a, a kind of a, a rough area where it's going to be located. Most developers that come here and, uh, develop a, an apartment building have to deal with that problem every time. And that's going to be a problem here, uh, how much detention you're going to have. Uh, the water table is going to be a problem here. The first development that was proposed, was my first, first week on the city council, that's how long ago it was, was a development on, uh, Site One. And it was proposed to be an apartment, mixed-use, and provide parking for the Hemmans at the same time. And the developer came back in three weeks and said they found water when they started to look there. There is water there. And, uh, so you have, I, I'm really concerned about the, uh, below-ground parking, if that's going to be something that's feasible anywhere. And I'm going to ask the question, uh, have you looked at, uh, is there any thought about basements in any of these buildings for storage for people? Cause people now use their garage for a storage, uh, facility, and then they're on the street. So is that something that's been considered for the single-family home? And we're not the developers here. So I look at the site plan and see how, uh, how it can be laid out. But my biggest concern is I don't think you spend enough time looking at stormwater detention. I didn't see any on Site Two. So I think that's a problem.
Right. We're, we're anticipating that Sites One and Site Two will have to have some form of, um, of vaults. Yeah, in terms, so, so that, because that land is simply too valuable, much like Councilmember Rocheburger was talking about, giving up surface parking in downtown environments. Uh, you lose land efficiency by, by surface detention ponds. So, um, you, you're absolutely right. That's, that's something that, 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 when specific developments come forward, we'll have to dig much more, pardon the pun, dig much more deeply into.
In that new scope of work, I'll hire a civil engineer, too.
You know, stormwater detention ponds look nice, uh, even if you put them on a piece of public, uh, open space, but it's not a playground.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
And I think that's, uh, something that you have to deal. You're going to give up that public, open space to meet the requirement. So-
Right. We're, yeah, we're certainly, especially on Site Three, we're certainly hopeful that we could get additional land reclaimed, but we're not giving up on the fact that Area Three up there, uh, would be set aside for a well-designed stormwater facility to accommodate exactly what you're talking about, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, we're going to move on. I'm going to ask for an adjournment here, and we're going to come back right after, let's take a five-minute break. And Chief Sagan is going to come up, uh, at the beginning of the meeting to give us an update on the incident that happened over at, uh, across the river. And then we'll move on with, uh, the, uh, regular city council meeting at probably, probably seven-thirty-ish. Okay? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
Move the second to adjourn. Court, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheburger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene, uh, with the regular council meeting and Mr.
Special meeting for the Elgin City Council to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rasschenberger?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of minutes of the previous meeting of November 20th.
Someone?
Second.
Been moved in second and any corrections or additions? Hearing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Abstained.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, date zero with one abstention. Communications this evening. Chief Sagan?
Good evening, everyone. So, I think as everybody knows, we had a substantial incident down at Tent City tonight. This call came in about 10 minutes to 5:00. Upon arrival, we had a large body of fire. It is on social media now, I saw a couple photos already. So, what I'm here to tell you is, we estimate that we have approximately four to five structures of some sort that were lost. Now, when I talk about structures in this type of environment, some are simply structures made out of tarps, but then there are also substantial wooden structures down there with doors and windows and a couple of those were lost also. So, there are four to five, best I can tell, footprints of areas that were lost. When I was the first one on the scene there with the first police officer, nobody was on site in the area. The police did a canvas of the immediate area around it, around the fire damaged area, and nobody was there. We talked to a couple people that wandered by and said if they had heard of anything, anybody around, nobody was around, and one person did say they don't believe anybody was living in that specific area at this point in time. One thing we don't know is, one, if that's accurate, and two, with it being right around dinnertime, were those people in fact out and out at the, getting dinner at one of the churches, wherever the churches were, whichever church was hosting dinner tonight? So, at this point, it's very, very difficult for us to tell if they were occupied, there is a lot of debris there, and there certainly is remnants of people having lived there, but whether they're living there today or not, we just don't know. There were no injuries from police or fire, and obviously no civilian injuries at this point. The fire has been put out, one challenge that we continue to have is the wind. If you haven't been out in the last couple hours, the wind has really picked up, and because of the conditions of the woods down there, a lot of the trees were on fire, so now we're dealing with embers that are 30, 40, 50 feet in the air. We believe we have them, but with this wind, our biggest concern right now, as the fire's completely out, are embers that were blown 40, 50, 60, 70 yards down, and they're smoldering, and there's no way for us to get into every corner and crevice of that area to ensure that there are none of, there's nothing there. So, I would say there's a slight chance that we could have a problem there later on in the evening. I don't think it's likely, but it is something that could happen.
Well, keep us informed and make sure that the people get the assistance that they get. Mr. Thorne?
Thank you. Thank you, Rob, for your quick assistance and the EPD. I've had two texts already from people that are concerned and would like to know if there's any opportunity to donate clothing.
So, at this point, there's no, there's no way to directly help anybody who may have been there because there is nobody there. We actually had somebody show up on site with coats to give to these people, there's nobody there to give them to. So, if they really want to donate, the Community Crisis Center is doing a coat drive, they could put those there. I think the one lady who did stop by was going to go to the emergency shelter tonight and offer those to them, to see if they have, if anybody shows up from there and says, hey, I lost all my stuff in this fire. So, that's kind of the best we can do at this point because there's no direct way to help who lived in that area. Thank you.
Ms. Paul? Okay, Karina, go ahead.
So, we will be working with the SRL, the Coalition for Religious Leaders in Elgin, as well as our community partners who work with people who live in Tent City to coordinate some type of help, whether that's coats or food, whatever it might be. We just need to figure out what the needs are first. Thankfully, our warming, our emergency warming shelter was scheduled to be open today because of the weather, so that's an option for tonight, and we're just going to be taking it day by day. But any updates, we will be posting, sharing with, with our network of providers and community leaders, and posting something on social media if there is that opportunity to donate anything.
Ms. Paul?
That answered my question. I just wanted someone to remind folks about the emergency warming shelter that is open tonight, and hopefully the folks that were affected will be able to take advantage of the, of the emergency shelter tonight since, you know, all of this has happened, and so thank you for, for the updates.
Ms. Rasschenberger?
Thank you, Chief, and first of all, I'm happy to hear no one was hurt and no one was there. I really appreciate that you're already on top of where we're going to put people that probably stay there. Is there going to be an investigation on how the fire started?
We're going to take a look at it, but with the amount of the damage and the type of materials, it's not the typical type of fire investigation you can do in a structure where you have fire patterns that will help direct us back to that, direct that area of origin. But we will, we will have somebody to go out there and take a look at it, but it's going to be very difficult to be able to identify that. Also, one other challenge you have is when you have open areas like this, when you have a fire, the wind, what we call wind-driven fire, changes the fire dynamics, so it's, it'll make it very challenging for us to actually find out exactly where this happened, where this started, and what may have started it.
Yeah, and then I think it's a concern for all of us to say, what's the future of people out in the cold and having fires, et cetera? I don't know if they had them before, but it sounds like someone had fire.
Well, and if there was a, you know, if this was an open burning fire, somebody created like a fire pit, that could be one option. We also did find generators down there, whether those were running at the time of the event and if they were tied to heaters, those are all things that we just don't have answers to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Keep us informed. We have no further public comments this evening. We have one bid, bid number 24061, Bluff City Cemetery Contract.
Mayor, I move that we award this contract, it's a three-year contract to Professional Cemetery Services of Dundee, in the amount of $368,088.
It's been moved in second, any questions? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Brings us to other business, the first item is a public hearing on the 2020 proposed City of Elgin budget. I declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here at this time on the city council or in the audience that wishes to speak towards the recent budget, now's your opportunity. Anyone wish to speak to the budget? 2025 budget? One last chance. Seeing nobody at the podium, declare the public hearing closed. Brings us to item two is consideration of petition number 27-24, 1005 North Liberty Street, conditional use for a planned development to construct a new motor vehicle service station with a convenience store. Mr. Malat?
Sorry, one second, we'll get switched over here, my apologies. There we are. This property is located at the northeast corner of North Liberty and Cooper Avenue. Here is Liberty Street, this is Cooper, Dundee is one block west, this is Bee Villa, Wendy's Fast Food, Advance Auto Parts, and Liberty Liquor. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing vacant gas station in Car Wash at 1005 North Liberty Street and construct a new gas station and convenience store. These images show the property as it generally is today and as it was in 2012. Property's been vacant since at least 2016. This development application resulted from a joint effort between the Community Development and Neighborhood Services Departments. The new gas station would include four double-sided fuel stations with eight fueling stations underneath covered by the canopy. The gas station would not include diesel fueling stations for trucks, and approximately 2,700 square foot convenience store would be located on the north side of the property. The clean, modern architecture is mainly brick that is also used to clad the canopy support columns. The proposed site improvements include consolidating the two curb cuts on Liberty Street into one full access drive, and reducing the size of the Cooper Avenue curb cut into one defined full access driveway. The existing underground fuel, fuel tanks would be removed and new ones installed. The applicant would also install new landscaping throughout the site and a new six-foot-high solid fence along the north and east property lines to screen the adjacent homes. The convenience store would be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, offering typical household goods and prepackaged food and drink. The applicant is not proposing to sell beer, wine, or alcohol. The applicant anticipates the new gas station would carry Circle K or Philip 76 brand gasoline. The applicant is present should you have any questions. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined within your package.
Move for approval, subject to the conditions.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Ortiz?
Appreciate you, Mr. Malat, and your team and the petitioner for doing this, it's been abandoned, they were unoccupied for a long time with graffiti all over the place, there's a lot of Facebook warriors out there that just hound us about it, so I'm glad that somebody's coming in and cleaning it up and putting a brand-new structure there. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rasschenberger?
Yeah, I understand if you're removing the gas tanks and putting new ones in?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a possibility of remediation or, you know?
Is there a need for some sort of soil, that'll be determined if, if in the course they discover, when they dig them out, that there was leaking, that'll be?
That'll be part of it, okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Stefan?
Just thank you, Mark, and, and the applicants. I had a bunch of questions when I saw this, having been involved with, with it on a legal aspect years ago, but all my questions were answered. One, they're not going to apply for a liquor license, I saw that, and they are considering and planning to put in two EV stations, so appreciate that, thank you. That's all I had.
We have a motion and a second, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Brings us to item three is a public hearing for the First Amendment to an annexation agreement. Westman Parcel contiguous to the Shodin Assemblage with HPI Elgin LLC, First Amendment to Annexation Agreement, HPI Elgin East Assemblage with HPI LLC, and First Amendment to Annexation Agreement, HPI LLC, West Assemblage with HPI LLC. Declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat, do you have any comments at this time?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone wish to comment?
Only just to say thanks to Mr. Malat for?
State your name for the?
Certainly, my name's Tom Burdy, I'm the attorney for HPIL or PHI Elgin, it was 20 years ago when we brought over 1,000 acres into this community. We want to re-up it, sorry the development didn't occur as quickly as we thought out on the west side. Want to thank Mr. Malat for getting this done before it expired on December 8th, and this dates back to when the mayor was on the plan commission, so, little history here, so thank you.
These things take a long time. Anyone else, the council wish to speak? Anyone in the audience, Ellen Moni Olson, the audience, who wants to speak as a public hearing? Seeing no one at the podium, declare the public hearing closed. Item, item four is a resolution authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement with HPI LLC East Assemblage.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Item five is a resolution authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement with HPI LLC doing business with, as West Assemblage.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved, nine zero. Item six is a resolution authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement with HPI Elgin, Westman, Westman Parcel contiguous to the Shodin Assemblage.
Move for approval.
Moved in seconded for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC for provision of refuse recyclables, yard waste, and organic material collection services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Abstained.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved, eight zero with one abstention. Item eight is a resolution ratifying the exceptions, the acceptance of a grant from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and ratifying the execution of a grant agreement relating thereto in connection with the implementation of lit service line replacements within the municipal boundaries of the City of Elgin.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Project keeps moving on. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Miscellaneous business?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, nine zero. Announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. I entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
Someone?
Moved in second to adjourn, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned, now entertain a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Moved in second to reconvene, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rasschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we're back in business, Mr. Manager, I believe we're on B.
I agree, this is the Kimball Street Bridge reconstruction aesthetic enhancement options. We can't do the North Grove redevelopment area without a new bridge. Mike Povens this evening will be presenting conceptual design options for the replacement of the Kimball Street Bridge. His discussion will include an assessment of the relative viability and costs for the options being considered with the goal of obtaining consensus this evening on the preferred bridge design and aesthetic elements so that we can bring back final designs to the council at some point in the nearer future. How are you, Mr. Povens?
I am well, thank you. Mayor, I would like to thank you for that short break, it's hard to follow, Mark Jagger, I mean, Mark Malat, so the break did me good.
It's always in the plan.
Gave me a little room to breathe, so that's all right. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, we're back to continue our discussion on some of the aesthetic enhancement opportunities for the Kimball Street Bridge. So, we're going to look at a variety of locations and features on the bridge tonight. We'll be referring to different elements as shown on the aesthetic rendering map on this page. We'll talk about pier types and shapes, girders, pedestrian overlooks, barriers and railings, lighting, monuments and wayfinding, concrete surface treatments, steel coatings, and mask walls, so we're going to, there are a lot of options that will be presented tonight. Again, don't need final decisions tonight, but this is to give you something to think about as to the, as to the style and look of the bridge that you'd like to have when we're finished. So, starting with pier shape, again, one of the beauties of concrete is that it can be manipulated in many different varieties, different colors, different shapes and textures with the use of different form liners and, and forms. So, one of the options we'll have on the pier shape is doing a continuous wall pier with, this one shows a vertical striation pattern. The picture on the right is again using a form liner, which is basically just a, an insert that goes inside the regular form that, that when you take it out, gives a pattern like a cookie cutter type of thing. So, these are just two options, again, quite variable with what you can use and what you can see. One of the challenges we'll have with, with this option though is the presence or removal of the dam. If the dam remains, most of the pier will be underwater, so this may not be a good place to put additional resources in, in coming with a decorative pier, but again, that's something we'll determine, we're still considering and will determine, make a final determination as we move forward. Moving on then to girder shape, so if we go with steel girders, we oftentimes see just a straight steel girder. Another option we can consider is what's called a haunched girder, and it basically has that, that gradual arch shape where it is wider at the piers and then narrows over the center. So, some folks feel like it gives the bridge a sleeker look, a more elegant look, but that's again another option that we consider if we go with a steel girder bridge. Pedestrian overlooks, this will be an option that is fairly easily included in the bridge, and again, like many of these, we're going to have lots of options that we can choose from. And again, like many of these, we're gonna have lots of options that we can choose from. So, again, here's some examples. The picture on the left is just a pedestrian overlook with some monuments. You can add some decorative features, you can add benches. I think the bigger decision will be the size and, and scale of the overlooks that we choose. Again, the picture on the left, this is a bridge in Amsterdam, has what they call Plaza-style pedestrian overlook, so about half of that overlook is actually hanging outside the edge of the bridge. So, a little more, you know, extends significantly further out, certainly not as subdued as the one on the right, which is just kind of a bump out type of overlook that might hold one or two people. Again, this, the barriers and railings and any of the concrete elements, as I said, we'll have a great opportunity to, to show some variety of color and textures. So, the picture on the left shows a barrier wall, it's got a steel railing with concrete pilasters, and again, using that form liner pattern to give kind of a concrete block look. But, if you remember our Civic Center Plaza, we have a retaining wall there. It also used form liners to give a kind of a stone version. And again, you can color concrete in many different shades now as well. So, I wouldn't say it's an endless variety of shades and, and forms, but quite a few to choose from. Continuing on with the railings, again, if you want a more traditional look, you might go with the stone or a brick look. More modern look or sleeker look might be the stainless steel type of railings that you see on the right. One of them has a wire mesh, the other has cables running through it. So again, part of this process will be to kind of come up with a theme or a style for the, for the bridge overall. And a few more railings, here's a combination, again, not to run it into the ground, but again, the combinations are quite large. Here's a combination, concrete barrier with a steel railing. The picture on the right, again, just shows some of the color combinations. And again, these even have, I don't know if those are painted girders or the concrete is, is colored that way, but it gives it a very decorative look. Lighting is another option that can add quite a variety to the look of the bridge. The rail, the railing post lighting on the left, actually, if you look in the foreground of that and you see the white lighting that's shining downward on that, on that gathering area, this is an example of rail post lighting. You can see some handrail lighting, and then on the far right, pier up lighting. Again, that, the pier work, again, very contingent on what we do with the dam and how much space. So again, that option may not be as easy to incorporate. And continuing with the lighting theme, so fascia lighting, starting to see more and more structures with this type of colored lighting. You can get programmable lighting, you can do different theme lighting. So, on the fascia, so that's on the exposed face of the, of the girders and the barrier walls on the outside of the bridge where, where these are shown. And then on the right, just also under the lighting category, there's a wide variety of light poles, decorative light poles and fixtures that you can use. We've got a theme that runs through downtown now of, of the type of light poles. Again, that can be replicated and continued through the bridge, or we can go with something quite different. This is maybe not as critical of an issue, but something we don't often think about, the monument and wayfinding. That's an opportunity to include some artistic elements on the bridge. See a fascia wayfinding, that's, that bridge goes over a roadway, so that kind of makes a little bit of sense. They've put either the city name or road name on that panel on the fascia. And then the last picture on the right is a, more of an architecturally decorative canopy, again, to give it a certain sense of style. Concrete surface treatments, again, very similar to the railing ideas we talked about, and we may have a really good opportunity to use something like this with the bike trail underpass. So if you, just looking at some of those, perhaps you can already come up with some type of theme or images that you would want on that vertical wall that's going to, to be along the underpass. And again, a variety of patterns and colors can be incorporated in there. Some more concrete surface treatments, here's some parapet fascia. The parapet is basically the outside wall of the bridge. It's above the, it's on top of the deck, again, keeps you from falling off if you go too fast. So again, a wide variety of form liners. There's also concrete painting that can be done. Concrete painting is very durable these days, and again, really opens up to, again, the different styles that are available. Again, if we go with steel structures, we'll have a choice, do we want to paint the steel? Again, you've probably seen multiple colors of steel, like here's a green coating, there's some blue ones that are used on the interstates now, reds, again, a variety of colors that can be used. I think you would work those in with a general theme that goes along with all your railings and other type of elements. A weathering steel in the middle, again, probably, these are pretty common, the weathering steel structures. The rust coating on the steel is by design, it actually protects the steel from additional weathering. And then a galvanized steel structure down on the right. I apologize that the scale, that's a little bit small, but that galvanized look is a kind of silver grayish type of color. And just some more examples of steel coatings, this time on railings. Here's a pedestrian row with the weathered steel. And then just the same image on the right, the steel railing, both with stainless steel or painted steel. And an idea, this again, might, this may work better on the west side of the bridge, so you may have seen, when you look under a bridge, there's a slope wall that comes up from the river's edge up to the top of the abutment. So if you, one opportunity for a decorative element is to put these mask walls or abutment, you know, mask walls, again, with some decorative features on it. So, again, we've looked at a lot tonight, and there's no rights or wrongs with any of this. It's really gonna be, I think, one thing to think about is the theme that you want for this structure overall, and as we get further into the design process, we'll be working with people who have a much better eye for these things than I, who can, who will bring us some options. But with that, I would open it up for just comments, questions, if you have any opinions tonight as to general direction that you would like, or features just in general that you like the overlooks or the mask walls or something, and we can-
Ms. Powell?
Thank you. A couple of questions I have for you, Mike, and thank you for the presentation. Do we have the ability, or to what ability do we have to mix some of the lighting features? Like for example, can we mix the railing post lighting with the pier up lighting or the handrail lighting, or is it just a matter of you kind of pick one, but not mix and match all of them or some of them together? And the same thing with the fascia?
From a design and constructibility point, I don't think there are limitations on that. They're not mutually exclusive, it's just again, what you want to see.
And then, I appreciate the incorporation of like the monuments and wayfinding, our ability to kind of incorporate art. I know our cultural arts commission will be excited about that. A question I have about the concrete painting, looks like concrete surface treatments, is this something that, I see that there's painting, but is this something, I guess, what I'm looking for are more spaces to put murals? Is that the type of painting that we, that could be incorporated there?
I, I mean, I think there will be a space to put a mural, again, on the, on the trail underpass.
Yeah.
So on the west side, that'll be somewhat inaccessible, you know, the railroad is over there. So, and it's pretty much hidden from
Right.
most view, right, unless you're looking at it from the far side of the river. So, let's see if I can get to the right one.
As we talk about potential art spaces-
Yeah, we'll have something like this on the east side, that center picture. Gives you a decent idea of, if you can imagine the, the trail going under the structure on the left side of that picture, so there'll be a vertical wall going up to, to the bridge girders, the trail to the left, and then there will be, we've been looking at both the tunnel design and the seawall design.
Okay.
The tunnel design would be completely enclosed, the seawall would have an opening on that side, and we're leaning towards the seawall design, one because it provides more openness and more natural light, but-
Yes.
So there'll be some, some vertical surfaces in there that you could do this type of application.
Okay.
Or, I've not worked with, with murals and painting murals, and so I'm hard pressed to comment on the durability of that medium, but-
Got it. Amanda hasn't hit you up yet? Surprised.
Still run faster than her.
Good to know. No, I, I like the options. Is there going to be an opportunity to get public input on some of these as well at some point?
There can be.
I mean, if we can maybe narrow, and you've narrowed some of these down.
If I can add to that, there, in our original timeline, there was not a designated public information session for bridge aesthetics.
Okay.
That's, this idea is kind of,
New.
I mean, we knew we wanted to talk about the signature bridge option, and it's kind of led to these aesthetic designs, so it's kind of come up a little bit after our original schedule, but-
I mean, if there's, you know, time for us to incorporate that, I think that would be interesting. I mean, and I realize that there's a whole lot of moving parts here, and it would have to be structured in a way that, you know, you've got some, you know, good feedback. My personal likes, I really like the pedestrian overlooks with the benches and the monuments, the ones that are really pronounced and go out a lot further off of the bridge. I think those are really nice. Looks like you've got a Plaza-style pedestrian overlook that's really neat. I do like the, all of the lighting kind of catches my attention. I like the railing post lighting, the handrail lighting, the pier up lighting. Probably not all of them together, but some of those, you know, or one of them, as well as the fascia lighting, I, I think those, that would be really neat to incorporate. The monuments and wayfinding, a way for us to incorporate our public art. The canopy structures is eye-catching to me. I'm just kind of going through and saying some of the things that I liked. One of the things, and this kind of goes back to one of our speakers during public comment tonight, kind of talking about the history of the land that we're on, and the Native American tribes that were, that occupied this land before a lot of us obviously came here. That might lend itself to some of the design work that we have, we see along the retaining wall, kind of honoring that heritage. And that would, I could see us doing something like that there that would, I think, would be really neat and providing, you know, an explanation as to what this is and why in, along those concrete surface treatments. I'd like to see us do something like that there. If possible.
I think as we go through the process in regard to getting input, I wonder if a more effective strategy might be to work with our consultants to put together some design ideas, some, some complete ideas. So here's a modern theme, here's a traditional theme, here's-
Yes.
And this is what I've done to you tonight, I've kind of dumped, here's a whole bunch of stuff, what do you like, right? It's challenging for a large group of people to, to go through all that and say-
Right.
"We all want this." So I think, you know, we're in phase one of the project, which is a lot of the environmental studies, the basic alignment, basic design features. We'll start phase two hopefully in the fall of '25, and sometime perhaps late summer, maybe fall, we might be at that point where we can start, we would start focusing more on the actual aesthetics of the structure.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mike, I want to confirm, the proposals that you're showing tonight and everything that we're talking about, we're looking in the 25 to 35 million dollar range, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just so for perspective with everybody. We had ranges that went up to 75 million when Mike originally presented, had the sense with that shorter structure, it's maybe too much for that area, so that's what we're looking at in this instance.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
That's an excellent point, thank you.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I really enjoyed this. We're talking about a bridge that has lasted 100 years, and just thinking about that, and I think we're all in agreement that what we're looking for is something that is safe and hopefully will last another 100 years. And I think that, for me personally, what's important is that we can look at the river as we go by. I think that I enjoy that when I cross a river, I mean, a river on a bridge. And I think the city has done a good job with the bike path, like on the east side of the river, and people enjoy it. I know we've done a few things, like where the Hemmans is at, and between the Hemmans and the bridge, and it's very walkable and stuff. So I think that's a good place to do that. On the bridge, I think it should really be a bridge. As far as lighting, it does look beautiful. My concern is where the promenade is. We have those umbrellas that are there, and they did, they were beautiful and they looked really nice, and I know very nice pictures, but I remember there was a time when there was, the electrical board went out and it looked really bad, and it's really hard to keep that, and I can't see keeping that for 100 years, you know, or to keep. I look right now at the snowflakes that are on the bridge, they look very nice, but just on the north side, I counted there's seven of them that are out, and that's just seasonal, you know. So, what I, I do like on, on this, but it's me again just talking, is on the steel coating, it's the second to the last one, I like the pedestrian rail with stainless steel and it's painted. I think that's something that's more manageable. I think it's something that we can keep up with, but I like the view that we're able to look like, I like looking at Walton Island and the flag, you know, and we can always see how high the river is or how low. And so to me, to keep that, that it's easy to maintain, it's easy to look, and that it's a sidewalk that people, that's what they should do is walk on it and cross it, and that's it. Maybe if people want to stay there and look and have a sandwich or something, maybe they can do another side, but that's just me. But I enjoy what you're showing us, and we have another bridge too. As a matter of fact, we have other bridges, so it's gonna be kind of costly, so I'm looking also at what all, all of these are gonna cost. You know, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. To Thorn?
Thank you, Mike, as always, enlightening.
Thank you, Mike. As always, enlightening. Um, you know, they all look nice, and that's what we wanted, we wanted to look nice, but I think that with our lead pipe expense and everything else, it's, the cost is, it's got to be at the forefront. I, I would think that if we did a, a resident pole, that that would certainly be, uh, the biggest concern. It, lighting looks neat, uh, artistic elements, uh, mask walls. I'm wondering if, if it turns out that we wanted to add those, are those something you could do, you could put those in at a later date?
I think some of the features you could. Um, it's easier to do when you're building the structure, and easier generally translates to less expensive. So to come back later and to add mask walls, or to come back later and add lighting, uh,
The initial cost-
I'm an engineer, so my default is to say yes.
Yeah.
We can do it, right? We put people on the moon, we can put lights on a bridge, but it would be expensive.
Yeah, I got you.
More expensive.
I got you, it's just that it, uh, looking at the initial cost versus modification down the road when there's an upgrade needed, or-
Yeah.
a choice to, uh, variation on a theme.
Mm-hmm. Well, I anticipate when we come back to you with, with different design and aesthetic options, we'll have estimate of costs with those as well, as, along with a, a discussion on funding that we've secured, and funding that we need to provide as a city.
Sure.
Uh, working with our consultants, we've, we've put together a, basically a table of different funding programs and tracking, we know when these programs open and the dates things are due, so we've applied for, uh, three million dollar grant already for the underpass. Uh, there's a big service transportation, a call for projects, it's open now, we're going to submit both the bridges for that. So when I come back to you with all this, we'll say, here's the option, here's what it costs, here's how much money we've got.
Got you, cool.
I think that has to be, I agree, you can't, you can't ignore the cost.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Povence, for your, uh, presentation. Uh, I'll start from the back end and just got to kind of go through and give my opinions on, uh, on each, uh, each portion.
Please.
Really quickly here. So, starting with the, uh, the mask walls on the back end, uh, I definitely like the, the custom, the custom, I'm sorry, uh, form liner,
Mm-hmm.
uh, approach as opposed to, uh, what's next to it. Um, and I, and I think, like to Councilwoman Powell's point, that it would give a, it's a great option, a great idea to incorporate some of the Native American heritage, but also too, I think it's an opportunity to incorporate, um, uh, Elgin's history, uh, on these walls, almost like our own hieroglyphics, and so we can have, uh, Councilman Thorne, you know, with a gas vehicle there painted, you know, on the side of it.
Immortalized.
I'll model for it.
I think that, I think that would be really fitting, he would like that, alright? Um, and so, but going then, uh, next to the steel coat, the steel coating, um, the, the painting option, I've seen the ability to paint the rails, I've seen that go bad, uh, and that is the upkeep counted to Councilwoman, um, uh, Martinez's point, uh, similar to the lighting, it's just a lot more maintenance connected with that, and, and so, um, I would lean more towards just the, the stainless steel, um, option, uh, when it comes to steel coating. Um, the concrete surface, very similar, I think that's an option, an opportunity for art, for Native American history, for Elgin's history, um, to be a part of that. I like the artistic monument and the monuments and, and wayfinding. Um, the artistic monument, uh, or the canopy structure is what I would lean towards. And, uh, when it comes to lighting, I like the idea of lighting, but I particularly like it in that, at this time, because we just finished talking about having a presentation on the new project that's coming into our downtown area, which Kimball would lead into, and so in having a more dense, uh, area on the, on the north side of our downtown, um, will give it more of a cityscape type of a feeling to be able to, to have that lighting in there. Um, and, you know, lighting can be difficult to keep up, and that point has already been made, but I think for the most part, the lighting, uh, of the, um, of the promenade has been really good. Um, and so I, I, I think that if we continue that theme, especially in a high traffic area, um, and especially with the development that we're going to be doing, I, I think it just all fits in and flows, so. Far as barriers and railings, I lean more towards the concrete on those, it's, I'm afraid of heights, so it just makes me feel more secure. So that's a personal thing. I mean, we're giving a personal opinion, right? Okay, alright, alright, just checking. Uh, and I definitely like the bump out, the larger bump out. The other bump outs are more like, you know, let me stand to the side so I can let a bike go past, it's not really made to be enjoyed. Um, so I like the intentionality of having something like this with a structure in the middle where people can really relax and take in the environment, and it also makes you feel like you're more surrounded by the water, uh, when you have like this, this half circle type of, uh, type of push out. So I, I, I think that's, uh, really nice. Um, and there was something I saw in here with signage. So if we don't do complete, you know, lights across the, across the bridge, um, a lighted sign or letterings, uh, lettering of Elgin, you know, City of Elgin, or our motto, right, city in the suburbs, something to that effect to really make it pop a little bit, you know, during, at the nighttime, uh, during the nighttime, I think that would be great on both sides of the bridge, so. And I would say that for the other bridge project too, you know, that we'll be getting to as well, so. Those are my thoughts, good job, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, seeing you again. I just want to let you know, I've learned more about bridges in these last few months than I've ever known in my life, so thank you for that, I contribute that to you.
You're very welcome. Your family's going to hate me in a while, but as you educate them in your drives, but, uh, just a quick note, the picture on the left, you talked about having possibly the, the name of the city. Uh, if you, if you look on the face of the, the beams, uh, and kind of, as you go towards the upright of the corner, that's-
Amsterdam.
what's been done on this bridge, I believe it's in Amsterdam, so.
Ms. Roshenberger?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, I'm just gonna, um, suggest here that this bridge would be called a Steel Girder Bridge with piers. Is, is there a specific, a specific name for this kind of bridge?
Steel Beam Girder.
Okay, steel, okay, so that's the name, we're Steel Girder Bridge, and the pier shapes, can-
I, I guess that we, we still have the option of going to concrete, it's part of the design process.
Oh, I see, okay, or concrete, okay. So, the, the pier shapes, would they go with the, the pier, how many, first of all, how many piers would go across our river, just two or three?
I believe five.
Five would go across?
Yeah, I believe there's twelve now, and we'll be taking it down to five.
Okay, and those, the piers would be concrete, though?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, okay, and then we can sort of think about the shape.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Um, and this, um, steel girders also could be shaped somewhat like a-
The haunched girder, right.
Haunched, yeah, okay, and I'd like, yeah, I like that. Um,
I mean, you can have, the, these pictures show a, a continuous wall pier, you can have open piers too that, I didn't, I apologize, should have included a picture, but think of a, a base that comes up.
Like that, right, okay.
Yeah.
I also like the idea that, first of all, it's a pedestrian friendly bridge, we do want people to be crossing to different parts of our town with their, walking around their bicycles, so that would be a big consideration, which I'm sure it already is. And, um, I also like it maybe just one overlap on each side, a little bit bigger, maybe not as big as that one, but I do like the idea that that's, would be there. Um, and the artistic elements, um, I'd like also the, the mask walls, uh, and sculptures. I think that could be just something we also in, incorporate our artistic community, I mean, we could have someone design, um, the patterns, for example, that could go on the mask walls or some of our sculptures. I mean, I think now some of the bridges have like the fox, right, a, a fox across them, so I would like something, I don't know if it has to be a fox, but something like that. And you know that I sort of like the European style bridge. And, uh, I also prefer a little bit more of the, the concrete surface that has like the brick patterns, a little more traditional look for me. So that's, that, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just because I haven't heard it yet, I'm going to throw a vote out for the weathered steel. Um, for a couple reasons, it's cost efficient, and I just, I don't know, I feel like Elgin's kind of like a gritty town, and when we were looking at the original design options that you presented, uh, previously, I kind of liked the bulkier look to it, so that's where my, uh, perspective is coming from. Um, but I think I echo a lot of things I've heard up here, I like the pedestrian bump outs, um, I like the rail lighting, um, the continuous wall, uh, pier, and then the uplighting on the pier. Um, just because, I mean, if we think about it, this is going to be potentially, we don't know what's going to happen, um, yet with the dam vote, and then with the renderings we saw earlier this evening, this could be a date night bridge where people are hanging out by the east side of the Fox, grabbing a beer and then going for a walk on the river. So, it's, that's where I'm looking, it's kind of keeping it cost effective, efficient, matching it to the, uh, spirit of Elgin, and then making sure that it's still something that's attractive enough that people would want to take that stroll on the bridge, but that's all I got.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, well, Mike, I think just one thing, people want to feel safe, and when you've got cars whipping by you at forty miles an hour, and you're a pedestrian, you want to have a barrier.
Mm-hmm.
And a, a pretty secure barrier. So, uh, whether you make that attractive or not, I don't think that's the, the, uh, that's fine, but I think it's got to be something that's substantial. I, uh, I know people like to see the river, but the way their cars are made now, it's pretty hard to do that. If you put up a wall, the cars are short enough, if you're sitting in the car, you can't see over the wall. So, it's a little bit of a problem, and, uh, I think the lighting, uh, I, I like the idea of the lighting, but it should do, have two purposes too. It should also light the pedestrian part. So when people are walking there, they feel more safe, and, uh, uh, safety is a big thing for people, uh, in any community. If they don't feel safe, then they're not comfortable being down there. I think that's, uh, uh, pretty important. Oh, just Mike comments. Alright, thank you, Mike.
So just if, quickly, and your point on the safety consideration, Mayor, yeah, whatever, whatever final design we end up with, the, the bridge will be safe, that's prior number one. The, the barrier walls, we crash worthy, you know, we won't sacrifice safety for aesthetics or design. So, we are looking at, on the north side of, or excuse me, the south side of the bridge, we currently have a ten-foot bike walking path. On the north side, we have a seven-foot, we're considering widening that to ten feet, again, to provide a higher comfort level, and the way design requirements go, going to a ten-foot allows us to put up a barrier, whereas seven it doesn't, so.
Alright.
But, well, thank you all for your consideration tonight, we'll be bringing more back to you, and if you have any thoughts on it in the meantime, uh, please let me know.
We'll look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Item C and D are also brought to us by aspiring rock star Mike Povence. The first one is the Highland Woods twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing project. This is Design Engineering Services Agreement with EEI. EEI will be providing design engineering services for the twenty-twenty-five neighborhood street resurfacing and twenty-twenty-five collector's street resurfacing programs on various residential and collector's streets on the city's west side. Their design work will focus on pavement repairs, milling and resurfacing, roadway drainage, and ADA sidewalk upgrades. Once the design engineering services are completed, the city will advertise and award a construction contract to perform the street resurfacing during the twenty-twenty-five construction season. As the council is aware, Mr. Povence has been advancing the design engineering so we can hit the ground running as soon as the snow melts. Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second. Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved nine zero.
Item D is Design Engineering Services Agreement with Fairgram and Associates for the various east side streets twenty-twenty-five resurfacing project.
Move approval?
Second. To move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved nine zero.
Item E is the jurisdictional boundary agreement with the village of Pingree Grove. Elgin and Pingree Grove are seeking to execute a twenty-year intergovernmental agreement that recommits the previously agreed upon longer age boundaries of each municipality. The city and village, Elgin and Pingree Grove, that has executed a nearly identical twenty year agreement in March two thousand four that expired this past March. The agreement ensures that neither Elgin or Pingree Grove will annex or exercise zoning or subdivision authority within the jurisdictional area of the other municipality unless otherwise agreed to in writing. It's my understanding that the village of Pingree Grove approve this agreement on Tuesday evening, on Monday, Monday evening as well.
Move approval?
Second. Move the second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Ortiz?
Mr. Man, you said it was nearly identical, so are we giving up some parcels, or is it, are we moving the lines anyway? No? So it is identical?
Okay. When it's nearly identical, we don't, yeah.
I doesn't want to give them any land, but I can be honest.
Oh, why not?
You know, motion? Anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roshenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved nine zero.
Item F is Building Improvement Program Agreement with RRI-A One Properties LLC. RRI-A, as we'll refer to it, is seeking to replace two leaking grease interceptors in the basement of the Dream Hall at fifty-one South Grove Avenue. Dream Hall has been operating its food and drink hall at fifty-one South Grove since twenty-eighteen and purchased the property in November of twenty-twenty-three. The function of a grease interceptor, sometime called a grease trapper grease pit, you can talk about that at home, Councilmember Dixon, is to separate and temporarily restore fats, oils, and grease that are washed down the drain during food preparation and dishwashing at food service establishments. The grease interceptor prevents this material from entering and clogging Elgin sanitary sewer lines that ultimately end up at the Fox River Water Reclamation District Treatment Facility. The two existing five-hundred-pound grease traps on the premises are actually modified water reservoirs and not true grease traps. These reservoirs were modified and installed in twenty oh eight during the building renovation for the Mad Maggie's Restaurant. Failures at the modification points on these tanks regularly leak, and the lids no longer seal tightly, allowing odor to sometimes escape into the building. The new grease interceptors are approximately the same size as the existing interceptors, and they will be serviced about once every six months through the Grove Avenue door at the Dream Hall.
Move for approval?
Second.
Then move the second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Ortiz?
I see, uh, Mr. Encheverria's up there, I'm assuming that's his daughter with him. Appreciate the patience, man. You know, sometimes it feels like government goes really slow, but-
It does.
We, uh, I'm going to support this because I know it'll help your business and help a lot of the other startup businesses within your location succeed, and, uh, appreciate Mr. Malas' team, uh, coming around and helping get this together also, so appreciate the collaborative work.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I want to echo a little same sentiments, thank you for your patience, and, um, you know, there was a lot of communication surrounding these grease traps, uh, this year, and, uh, and so, um, you know, you know, uh, you know, I apologize for the miscommunications that, that did occur. And so, um, your business is definitely appreciated in the city. Um, you were around when a lot of businesses that are here now weren't, uh, and you're definitely a part of the heart, uh, of our city, Mr. Encheverria, so we appreciate you and we thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo a little same sentiments. Thank you for your patience. And, you know, there was a lot of communication surrounding these grease traps this year. And and so, you know, you know, I apologize for the miscommunications that that did occur. And so your business is definitely appreciated in the city. You were around when a lot of businesses that are here now weren't. And you're definitely a part of the heart of our city, Mr. Echeveria. So we appreciate you and we thank you. And hopefully this sets you on your path to, you know, having a more even and even more vibrant business if, you know, if you can believe that, and definitely in helping the other businesses that are coming into our downtown. So thank you.
Mr. Thorn?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One is, I want to compliment Mr. Echeveria with for running this successful business through thick and thin and COVID and keeping it going. And he makes a difference in downtown. He makes a difference in Elgin. And certainly that warrants part of this benefit for the city helping you out. But there's another thing that's of a benefit, and that's the fact that it wasn't done correctly originally. And now it will be. And that's for the building, for the building. It's down the road when whenever time comes that you decide to move on, it'll be correct for the structure itself. And so I think that that's of value. Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I just want to echo a lot of the comments from my colleagues. I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Echeveria earlier today. Definitely appreciate your patience. But more importantly, appreciate your investment in our downtown and our community. I know this is your hometown. Your family is here. You believe in Elgin, and it's evident in your investment in in the building down there. You've been there longer than probably a lot of other businesses that I can recall since I've sat here on this dais. So you're doing something right. And I appreciate that. It's a it's a really large property. So I know that it's not easy to manage. You've got a lot of overhead. But I think you found a creative way to utilize that property to your benefit, to the benefit of the businesses that are housed there, to the benefit of our community. So thank you. This this award through our TIF program may seem like a small amount for some, but it's huge for small business owners like Mr. Echeveria, who have already invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into this property. And so it's, I just want to highlight that because that's the whole point of these types of programs, to help these business owners continue to be successful in our community. And that's very important. And I know that there's some additional work that you're looking at with upgrading the elevators there. So hopefully we can work with you on that as well. Thank you. And take your daughter somewhere really, really nice when you leave here for her sitting through this really long meeting. Thank you.
Anything else down this way? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Yes, I just want to echo just what all my colleagues said. We're glad to have Kevin downtown.
Okay, anything else? Court, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon? Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorn?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item G is a Cook-
Glad to see it done.
Item G is a Cook County Class 7C Commercial Property Tax Incentive Renewal with Sri Kira LLC. This is for the property at 830 Summit Street, which is occupied by Dunkin' Donuts with a drive through and a Wingstop. Sri Kira, Sri Kira, excuse me, constructed this two tenant retail building back in 2020. Cook County provides a Class 7C Commercial Property Tax Incentive to minimize the financial burden associated with investments in unimproved or blighted commercial properties. This property was vacant and being underutilized when Sri Kira came in to create the construction. They applied for a Class 7C Tax Incentive and obtained a resolution in support of that incentive from Elgin in 2018 before beginning construction on their property in 2020. The Class 7C Tax Incentive went into effect for the 2020 tax year after construction was completed and both restaurants began occupying the building. Sri Kira is seeking a renewal of the Class 7C Commercial Property Tax Incentive. The estimated Cook County taxes generated during the five year time period of the renewal is $360,062. However, if this property was located in Kane County, that amount would only be $166,786. Given the disparity between Cook County and Kane County commercial property taxes during this time period, Sri Kira is requiring the renewal of the Class 7C Incentive to make the continued occupancy and employment and growth at 830 Summit Street economically feasible. The ultimate decision to award this Class 7C Incentive is by Cook County.
Move for approval?
Second. Move the second for approval. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ortiz.
So the first approval was in 2018. They started construction in 2020. When did they actually open the door? Do we know?
I don't I don't know if specifically, we do have the tenants here, but the tax relief went into effect in 2020 after both places received occupancy permits. And so I don't know if that's when the restaurants began.
It was in 2020.
Yeah.
So they've been in business for about four years?
Constance, you can come up to the podium with the information. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Whitley. I'm an attorney at Elliott and Associates, and I'm here representing Sri Kira LLC.
My name is Salim Desai. I'm the co-partner of the place.
Okay. So to answer your question, the Dunkin' Donuts became fully operational at this location on May 14, 2020. And then the Wingstop became fully operational as of June 1st, 2020. But the the resolution was issued in 2018. Construction started shortly thereafter, and then construction was completed in 2020, and they moved in shortly after finishing.
And and the memo of what the city manager just said is that you guys won't be, it won't be financially feasible if we don't approve it. So is the business still like starting up? You don't have enough clients? Or is it just that you still need this incentive to, because just because you want it?
Okay. So I can take the lead, and if there's something you want to add. So the Class 7C Tax Incentive is a five year incentive, while other incentives in Cook County are twelve years. And the construction cost for this project was more than they originally had planned. During construction, COVID happened, and then the cost of the materials for the construction also increased. So initially, they had planned a construction, sorry, I'm trying to find the figures here. Originally, the construction, and this does not include purchasing the land, so the land purchase cost was separate, but the estimated budget at the time back in 2018 was $750,000. The final construction cost due to the increase in construction costs for the materials, the materials increased during COVID, ended up being $1,031,400 when it was completed. Also, at the time that we applied for this back in 2018, Dunkin' Donuts and Wingstop was projecting fifteen employees to run both stores. They've actually exceeded what they've promised. They're currently at seventeen employees, and they're hoping to continue that, keeping that number of employees. And we're requesting this renewal to help with sustaining the current number of employees that they have. And then lastly, in the past fifteen months, I would say, the cost of food has gone up substantially. They've been in business in other locations for over sixteen years, and they've never seen such an increase in cost of food as there is now. So again, we would just like the opportunity to renew it for another five years. I'd also like to add the Class 7C Tax Incentive can only be renewed once. So this would be a one time only renewal if supported by the city of Elgin.
All right. Thank you very much.
While you're up here, I have a question. And this is, I'm I'm not really thrilled by your your application here. When you talk about, you just brought up about the food costs. Food costs went up for everybody. And the idea of the tax incentive here was to get the building constructed, to purchase the property, get the building constructed, not support you in in being in business for the next five years. Now you've got an unfair advantage over the people that are around you. And I have a little problem with that. I like to see things fair. So I'm really struggling with this, whether it's a deserved tax, a deserved tax break, or you're just asking it because it's out there for you. And everybody's costs went up, every construction cost, everything that everybody spent has gone up exponentially in the last three or four years. And you are the ones that are going to be getting the tax advantage here. So I think you've got five years. I think that's pretty fair. And I think that was, I think that was, we supported it when it first came around. And I'm having a little bit of a problem here. Justify to me why this tax incentive should support your cost of your cost of doing business. You said you have seventeen people. Obviously, you've got more employees than you anticipated because business is good. And are those the Dunkin' Donut employees? What about Wingstop? Are they the same? Have they increased the number of employees that they have? Or are you responsible for all the employees at both facilities?
No, they're they're both combined seventeen.
Okay. So you're you employ all seventeen people for both places. So your business must be good if you're anticipating and you're seeing more business there. So I have a little bit of a problem here. I'll see what my colleagues say, but anyway, I'll thank you for the information. Ms. Martinez, you had your hand up.
Yes. I live in that area. And I remember, I was kind of surprised that you built right there. I was like, how is that going to work? Because it is a small area, but it did work. And I remember it took you a long time, because, you know, I knew something was coming up, but I didn't know what it was. And at the time, I remember I had a knee replacement, and there's an an athletical that's like kitty corner from there. And they were giving me a hard time because they were saying, when is that going to happen? And it did. It took like two years for you to build. And I know that once it was built, because it was from 2018 to 2020, and that place has been booming. It's always busy. For me, it just seems more convenient than the one that was over on Dundee Avenue. It is just really hard that once you go in, I always have to go to the right to go north. But I want to come to the south, you know, and it's really hard to cross Dundee Avenue because of the of the four lanes. But here on Summit, you know, it is convenient because there are four lanes, but then there's that other lane in the middle, which makes it easier. But it's, it's always a busy place. It has that Wingstop that I always see it's busy. You serve people in in that area. And I think that it's a plus, you know. I am going to support it. And those are my comments, you know. Thank you for choosing that location.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Hi. So my question is, you own another very similar business?
Yes.
Both Wings?
Yeah.
Yeah. Another location in Elgin?
Two more, yeah.
Oh, and where are those locations?
One is 820 Chicago Street, Chicago and Willer.
Okay.
And one right across from Grand Rectora Basina.
Oh, okay.
Local territory.
Oh, yeah. And, yeah. Well, thank you for putting, you know, some businesses in more difficult locations. I think that's true. I guess my one question is, you have seventeen employees. Do you pay them close to the minimum wage or over minimum wage?
Nowadays, nobody is willing to work for minimum wage.
So you pay above minimum wage?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's great. And I'm sure they're not all full time, but some full time?
Some full time, some part time.
Some full time, part time. Well, I can only say that as a business or as our city of Elgin, and we all look for some sort of tax advantage or a grant from somebody somewhere. So and we don't make the final decision, right? Cook County does?
Cook County does.
Yeah. So I'll support you in the idea that you're you're here in Elgin and supporting more than minimum wage employees. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. I really appreciate you having your businesses here. I frequent your establishments. And so and actually, I know a lot of your employees because they're longtime lifelong residents here in Elgin. And and so I really don't see an unfair advantage when it comes to this request at all. You've contributed to the community, you, you know, outside of food cost and and cost of personnel, but just as you had pointed out initially, just the increased cost due to COVID, that's substantial. And that can really break a budget. And so, you know, requesting this this tax incentive that will last you for another five years, I think is really fitting. And so I don't think it's unfair at all. And so I'm going to be supporting this tonight. I think it's going to be approved. And so I wish you well and continue success.
Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I guess when I saw this on the agenda and looked at the memo and read through it, I initially had some concerns similar to what the mayor did. But I appreciated the details in the memo on the different results for the taxes, depending on if we would just have them taxed at a normal rate in Cook County, what would happen if we supported and voted in favor of the Class 7C program for them, and then also what this property would have paid if it was in Kane County. Because for me, it's, we've done this with other properties on the east side of Elgin and Cook County. The reality is Cook County taxes their commercial and industrial properties at a much higher rate than surrounding counties, Kane County in particular. And with about twenty, twenty-five percent of Elgin and Cook County, we're always struggling with that reality and trying to lure businesses to that side of town. And this is one way to do that. And as the analysis shows me from staff, they're still going to pay more in taxes even with this this assessment reduction than a business just two or three blocks west. I mean, from where they're at, it's the other side of the Little League fields, the western edge is of those fields is the county boundary. So they're really close to Kane County. And if they were just a couple of blocks west, they would be paying even less than what we're proposing for them. And so to me, it's more of a way to try to promote that side of town and make it more equitable for people that want to put businesses in there. Just given the reality that Cook County, their tax structure is much different, and their commercial and industrial gets taxed at a much higher rate. So with that, I'll support it as well.
Anything else? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you, by chance, do you own the location on East Chicago Street?
Yes.
You do? Okay. Is that in Cook County as well? I know it's close to the border.
That's correct.
It is? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your investment in our community, similar to what I said about Mr. Echeveria. You own three Dunkin' Donuts locations here. You're adding a Wingstop. I love Dunkin' Donuts. I've been to every single last one of your establishments. So appreciate it. And I guess from my perspective, our job here on the dais is to support business owners like yourself in being successful in our community. You're you're a proven commodity here. You've opened up stores, including the one on the east side here on Summit, in in areas that have been a little challenged. So I appreciate that. And I think we should be doing what we can to assist you. I know we don't make the final decision on this, but I will be voting in support of it. And I wish you well with Cook County. I hope that you you get this, rather than splitting hairs about, you know, whether, I guess, in my opinion, I would hope that business owners are trying to take advantage of whatever a municipality. So I, I will support this, um, and I just, uh, hope that the majority of the council supports this as well. Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Absolutely.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, I'll be a reluctant yes.
Item H is a fire protection agreement with both Illinois Tool Works and Covestro. The city currently has one-year fire protection agreements with these two companies, both located outside the city's corporate limits. The fire protection services being provided under each agreement include the same firefighting response and ambulance service as if the properties were located within the city's corporate limits. During the past 23 years, the fire department has responded to a total of 109 calls for service under the terms of these agreements, three of which occurred in 2024. Payment to the city under these agreements is derived from a tax rate that currently equates to $2.10 per $100 of equalized assessed valuation. Part of the reason for the one-year agreements is so we can make sure that the calculations for the cost recovery remain accurate.
Move for approval? Second? Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero.
Item I is the Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System, or IAMA's Master Service Agreement. IAMA's is a statewide program comprised of emergency management organizations within Illinois. Many of these emergency management agencies are either within fire and police departments, but they are also standalone agencies, typically within local county or state governmental bodies. This master agreement provides emergency management mutual aid assistance to communities in need across the state, county, and local jurisdictional boundaries. As a signatory to this agreement, Elgin will be able to receive and provide needed resources in a planned and coordinated manner.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move the second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved nine zero. Analysis from the council.
None? Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, everybody for a very, a successful tree lighting.
Don't look at me.
Well, you were down there.
I was down there, but I mean, that was incredible effort by the department.
It was silly, Mr. Stefan and Mr. Good were down there, and, and we were all standing there praying that the bulbs would light. And it, it did, so it was very, uh, very successful and a really good turnout.
That was the
I heard some good comments. I was in the Chamber of Commerce for a while, and many people that did not live in Elgin were down there and thought that it was really an outstanding event. And I heard, uh, a term from one lady, she came from New York visiting relatives, and she said, boy, this downtown is like a Hallmark moment. So I think that's a good, uh, a good statement back for the, for staff and everybody that worked on it.
Thanks, Mayor, again. That, that's the entire team of the Department of Cultural Arts and Special Events. That was their last production of the year, and they went out with a big bang with that. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, and I, I wanted to give kudos to the city. I saw that, the, uh, the video on the, on the social media of bringing the tree in and that whole ordeal, and it was just fantastic. And, uh, one of my relatives in South Carolina saw that and said, your town's really got it going on. So way to go, city.
Yeah, the entertainment, I guess, was free for people. They were on the balconies watching the tree come in, and so they made an event out of it. It was quite a, quite a thing. Anything else?
Mr. Manager, anything from staff?
I don't, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Some of
Second.
Move the second to adjourn, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.